Hello, everyone. Your call of honor, please, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag in the United States of America. As you would rather, we wish to send one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Happy New Year. We're gonna start the public speak. Oh. Hello. Public speak looks like it versus Diane, if you haven't seen it too much, would you like to?
I have been listening to her before.
We heard.
Um, no, I haven't listened.
You got that?
I haven't listened.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Walden. Mike.
Not yet.
Anybody else? Okay, let's get started. Uh, additions and additions. Anyone want to add anything?
Walden. Yes.
I want to add, to be generous, we will sing happy birthday. I would like to add 11C. And, uh, that should be approval of over expenditure.
11D, transfer. Approval of transfer of my salary to senior application or seniors.
Still, yeah.
And if you decide to transfer, it's technically a department request. I'm taking a second on my transfer. There is a.
Anyone else? Okay, so I want your motion that we add 11C, approval of over expenditures and 11D transfer request. Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
All those there, aye? Any votes? Let's move on to four orders, commissions, presentations and appointments. For A, United Development Commission, do signage, committee update. Lane?
Yep. I'm in charge. I know. Yeah, we had, we had our first meeting with our new committee, then we'll just go forward, like, and Captain McCollough, you're in. And, um, we need to do a lot of extra training now that we have new board members. So I'm gonna be putting in our budget, bat some training dollars to go ahead and go to some EDC committees, um, training that we have wanted to go into in the past, but we just didn't have the money. So I'll be asking to bump up the budget for that. But we're doing a lot of catch-up and explaining, um, what the EDC can do without a planner. And basically, it's marketing is what the EDC has to do when it comes to the town. So, marketing, the town decides, the welcome to Andover signs. And I've sent, um, examples of the two signs that we've gotten from two different sign companies. Both of them came in around five thousand a piece for the signs. So now we're looking for budget for those signs. And so we're gonna be looking for ten thousand dollars because we wanted to do two signs. One, um, at one end of Route Six and the other at the other end of Route Six. And once we have approval for the money, then we, as an EDC, will work on the actual designs and what the signs are really gonna look like and say. We just have examples now, but certainly without anyone who promised we, um, there's no point working on it. So I am looking to figure out how we get ten thousand dollars into the budget to pay for these signs. Um, I've talked to Fred Oliver and I am going to put in a request to CIP. And on Thursday night, I'm gonna go visit with them to go ahead and talk about it. I don't know if I happen to be for another presentation in board finance when it comes to the ten thousand dollar expenditure. Well, because I'm looking for guidance from the board selection, what we trust.
I can see that the, I mean, at least the feedback that I got, this is not to diminish the idea of doing science yet. Is ten thousand dollars on signs, the most effective use of ten thousand dollars to market the community? Some pointed out that Bolton was looking at branding, you know, they're looking at, you know, less than half by a couple grand, eight thousand or so. That's doing branding outreach, websites, you know, marketing slogans, Realtor packets. And that would be a better.
And, and we're looking into doing that too, but I, I don't see it as being as expensive as Bolton is proposing when it comes to eight thousand dollars.
No, but I mean, the science first.
The appropriate way is to go to CIP and put the signage out there and run. And then we'll sit there and work with CIP to determine if that's where we spend the money.
Yeah, yeah.
You should go to CIP and we'll all sit there and we'll get, is that where we're gonna spend the ten thousand dollars?
I understand what you're saying, but my point in bringing this up now is that I don't want her to feel frustrated. She goes to CIP, spends her time and effort, and then comes back here, the site is not worth it, so.
But I disagree with you because I look at EDC as going through and trying to find options that they can present to us. I'm gonna determine if we choose to do that or not. I personally, I like the design of the signs. I had some questions related to the signs. I'm not sure if ten thousand dollars would be enough. I'm not sure that I would increase the design.
That's a lot of money.
So, so to me, you know, the signs were one-sided, not two-sided. I would assume they would be two-sided because you'd wanna see them in both directions. There are five thousand dollars a sign. So when you're looking at ten thousand dollars, you're not sure that that would be the right number of signs. And if we were choosing to do it.
And I have thought of that question too, when both companies propose one-sided signs. And they'd say, because they're on the road and you go and, you know, you're entering Andover, the other side, you're leaving Andover, so it makes no sense to have welcome to Andover.
Would you say, I'm all for that, for visiting.
Thank you for visiting. We do a lot of everything, so. But the first thing is to go, is to do this, yeah. And then we have to determine if that's an appropriate use of money for EDC budget that has never been hunted prior.
It's correct.
And it's not that we don't fund it, I think it's that.
You gotta determine if it's the right use.
I think it would prove you to take the time to come up with more than one planner that does science. Because I'm gonna be very careful.
No, we're not working on it.
No, I understand that.
But I'm working on links to commercial property, on the website, and all of that.
I get that, but it just, I think it's, especially in this budget year, it's gonna be a hard press to ask for ten grand for signs. Just gonna say it.
But that does not mean that it doesn't need to be on the list to sit there and judge it.
I do, yeah, yeah.
Always a plan.
Yeah. And we're, you know, we are looking into doing something with bicycles decorated in front of businesses where you have patalogic chairs over a deep grid and whatever Bolton wants to do. But I, but I see that more as a business, buying the bike and decorating it as opposed to a town expense. This is the own town expense.
I've seen other towns go through this, right? First, Wollman thinks struggled with this for years when I lived there. And things like bicycles, like, it's a great idea, but you can't get a lot riding on bikes. And so people go buy a bike and they just think it's a cute decorated bike and they don't take the time to read it, right? It's, it's just one of those things where it's like, if you're gonna take the time and efforts to decorate something, it has to stand out. Then you walk through and just think it's a cute art installation and not realize it's Andover branded version, right? So that's where the idea of having a holistic branding strategy and having it all come together really becomes so important, right? And so that all the efforts that you see come to fruition to something, right? Because we want your commission to, not only do we wanna fund you, but wanna fund you and have you be effective and have you be, you know, happy about the effort that you've put out there and have it come back to you, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, we need to sort of fill those in, you know? Just food for thought.
Present this here.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No. That's it.
Thank you very much. What else I could offer, can you? Who's, who's gonna speak to this? Adrian?
Um, yeah, so I'm excited, I can definitely give you updates. So we, um, have, um, gone through and evaluated a bunch of different companies. We decided not to do a formal RP, but instead just a request from different vendors with any of the good one. And part of that has to do with A, is that it was possible to be talking to those towns who really had it going, who'd gone through the process already and found that it was just easier to go and solicit. And so we're able to actually get that from four different vendors, and we ended up coming down to it. They are, what, did we get a contract back?
We do not have a contract back. We're supposed to have one by the second, but I don't believe we have one. What?
He didn't actually send it today.
We do have it.
We do.
So you're keeping it, you're hiding it from Eric, or?
Um, he sent it the second.
So we're ready for a contract which we need to send over to the town attorney to get approved and that we will move forward from there.
Okay, so, so let's go backwards. So this is with Civic, right?
Yes, it's with Civic Plus, and they offer website development and, um, the technology to send mass communications. So it's Civic CMC and Civic Ready. And they have done, um, they have a huge list of the Connecticut towns that they service, um, surrounding towns as well. So we looked at that. They've built, um, many municipal websites throughout the country as well. We had a conference call.
Three thousands.
Yeah, we had a conference call with the rep today to talk about the next steps. Um, Eric's going to send the contract to the attorney to look at before we sign it. And then we should be able to move forward and start, you know, getting the design and training.
No, I don't, I can, to be, to be honest, I forget what you're talking about. We decided, we're, we're gonna do it over multi-year, right? We're doing a multi-year contract?
Well.
With a paid schedule?
No, no reason to. We have a budget right now. We're better off, why ask for the money every year if we've got the money budgeted right now?
So we're doing it all in months.
Yep.
But is it three-year or are you doing it per month?
Uh, so we can extend it however long. It's, it's basically an upfront cost and then a yearly service fee.
The upfront cost, yeah, just to?
About eleven thousand.
It's, yeah, it's around eleven thousand and I think around two more for the, the sixty.
Sixteen hundred. Sixteen hundred.
Does it make it mainly?
Yeah, mainly.
And so that's all of the texts, all of the mass emails, anything that we would want to do?
Yeah, correct.
So, so a resident signs in or, um, opts in, we take your email, they'll be informed or something.
Yes, and they can actually choose if they want to sign up for the emergency or weather services or news and events.
And we can define, we can define our.
So we're gonna pick the format layout, but then customize to what we want. And the committee works directly with their partners and does do training, you know, for myself.
And we're, we're gonna try to be proactive, so, you know, pretty quickly, we're gonna get them in here to start working. Start going through the process and stuff, so.
Okay.
We're hoping to have this, a good portion of this upfront by the end of this year.
Any other questions? We have others.
How, how are you getting the info out to your public to sign up?
We're gonna, to start, if right now, we're just trying to figure out what the mechanism's gonna be. We're gonna talk to them and see what they found. Instead of us trying to reinvent the wheel, they've done this thousands of times, so we're gonna talk to them and see what they say. What's the best way to do it? Most likely, we will probably look into it in flyer. We'll look into it something through, you know, this map, or we'll look into something through, um, you know, Facebook, our community average, Facebook pages on the run. I think we're up to five hundred or something followers, something like that. So we're getting there, you know, solely to show that we're getting that penetration. So we're gonna probably take all of those methods, but we'll focus on managing whatever this is that is most effective.
Right, and then once water loss hits.
Right, right.
But once Diane posted on a front page, it's, we will be successful.
This will be put in this and that other business.
And you're okay with that, right?
I'm.
Diane, absolutely not. I will be so upset that I cannot read the house.
That'd be job of mine, I promise you.
I know, but I already have a little committee on time for it.
Diane has already been so helpful, she's gonna try to get some photos together that we can use for Facebook and the website. Scott Chelpom is the new chair of the, um, committee. And he's, um, very involved and he came in today for the conference call. We did a live chat. So we want, and Wendy's on our committee as well. She's our vice chair. And, yeah, I think it's gonna be a lot of work from the start, but very excited about it.
Wendy's, Wendy's, uh, busting design work for the whole webpage, so we're really sort of, sort of, you know, test the person to kind of look at it and see if we're designing it the right way, so.
I'm just excited there's just different people involved, I think it's great.
Okay.
Okay.
And we definitely don't want to go without it.
That's the whole, we're such a, we're such a business.
All right, any other questions on this part, or would I say?
So does the board want to make a motion to, uh, actually enter into a contract?
We already gave you the approval to do that previously, so as I said to you at the meeting.
No, I believe you have. You gave me, you gave, you formed a permission to get back to the board's management with the recommendation.
Which if I remember correctly, during that meeting, we had debate and you said, am I coming back to you? And we said, very specifically, no, you don't need to. This is one of those things where we're trying not to micromanage. This comes back to how I said, I said repeatedly, for something like this, it does not make sense for us to micromanage. You hit the ground running, you make, you make a good decision, make that decision in the form of.
I mean, the money, the money is there, I wouldn't say we.
Does that allow us to say, I'm just, I'm always, want to make sure I'm not.
I, I don't, but since I, since we all are involved and we do, the contract when it comes, when it gets to the attorney, I would like to see what he says in relation to the contract.
Sure.
Next question, I'm gonna tell you, I would tell you to sign it because if the committee has identified that this is the appropriate group to go, we have a money budget now.
Correct.
Now, see, when I didn't do it.
Well, for example.
Correct. I mean, you're not gonna come back to the board, this board is elected and have us tell you that we know more about this company than the committee has done. So I would tell you, if the committee sets standards, if Civic CMS is the appropriate entity to go with, we have them on a budget, it's on your budget.
And in this argument, that's the whole point of having this one person or someone on that committee is, you know, unless, if there's a problem, it's my job to flag it and say, you know, flag the plan, but that's not the case, right? So.
I just want to see the contract.
Yeah. But that would be standard procedure.
Correct.
Does that make you feel better?
We should have.
That's, you want to make a motion, make a motion, we don't, we don't?
We don't.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, Memorial Day Committee. CIP, whoever, one is to appoint the following members, John McCall, Gerald Scaglio, Wade Thorp and Amy Knox to the committee. And we're still searching for one at-large member, is that accurate?
Correct.
Does someone want to make that motion?
Uh, make a motion. I want you to appoint the following numbers to the Memorial Day Committee. John McCall, Gerald Scaglio, sorry, I don't know what's your name, Wayne Thorp and Amy Knox. Term is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Since we're all, I can say, I like things. Anybody opposed?
No.
All right. Have the town initiative board?
Okay, it's fairly short, so I'll give the whole thing. Item number one, the rework to the public works is basically complete. Literally all they have to do at this point is get their dumpster out of there and I would sign off on that. The roof itself came out pretty well.
Can you get pictures of Facebook pages so people can see progress? Please.
You want a picture of the public works for the roof?
Yes.
A new bottom board and a new board after.
Okay.
Thank you. We wanted them to see where the place needs to spend.
Go ahead.
Great idea. As far as the snowplow budget goes, we trucked the Fairmont back early on due to the freezing rain. So far, we've run around six thousand in overtime and purchased around twenty-eight thousand in salt so far, plus I think another thirteen.
Can you tell us where that falls against the budget though? Because when you say that, I don't want people to say, oh, we've got all the overtime, we budgeted for overtime, so.
Sure, we budgeted for twenty thousand in overtime, hopefully for the last six so far.
Give or take that, I think.
Correct.
Correct.
And just so everybody knows, every time the plows do one complete loop of the town of Andover at night and put salt down, the town spends about eleven hundred dollars for every lap, basically. When you take in the cost of labor, um, and the cost of fuel and maintenance and the cost of salt. So.
That's, that's a complete lap, all three trucks.
Yes. All three trucks, complete lap, both directions, all lengths.
How are we, how is the salt building now, where are all those trucks at?
Uh, pretty well. I still have some concerns about their ability to accurately gauge how much they're putting down. We're trying to do it by truckloads, but one of the trucks at least is having a problem with the salt clumping in the back. So what they're doing is they're, they're coming in partway through, they're dumping the salt, you know, mixing it a few times and dumping it back in the trucks, which makes it a lot more difficult to account for how much is actually being used.
That way you figured out the cause, what's the difference between that truck and yours?
Uh, no, I can't say that I really have.
Is it the ground and the exhaust, is there a coating on the bed? There's gotta be something else that's causing that problem.
Yeah, I don't know, it's, it's the interaction that's, that's causing the problems.
So what do you need to, to be or somebody else to figure that out? It could be something as simple as, maybe it needs to be tards, maybe the. Yeah, it could be, it could be the way the, the flow of the truck, the, the way the, the melt or the, you know, the precipitation is coming into the truck, maybe a little more concentrated and that could cause that. It could be something that's simple, so whether it needs to be covered, it's could be exhaust where there's too much heat underneath the bed, right? Um, or it could be the coating issue, so we need to figure out what that is.
You inventorying the salt? How much do you think you have left of what you spent? You spent twenty thousand dollars.
Um, so we, we bought another thirteen on top of that. I think we've put down less than half of what we bought so far.
When did you buy the thirteen?
So we just bought that recently, within the last couple of days, not last week.
Do we have a flat price for the winter, or how does that work?
Yes, we do. We're running off the.
State contract.
The state contract, not, so there's a state contract and the CROG contract. And one of the two screwed up their contracts, so we're going off the other contract, yes.
Okay, so, so to go backwards, so as of the night of January, the total spend was twenty-eight thousand seventy-seven. You said we spent how much of it?
I think we spent another thirteen in salt. And we put half of the whole thing down.
Okay, so we're over budget on our salt.
We're over budget on salt, but because we previously had a lot of money aside for sand.
So, I just want to make sure that you understand. And you, you believe, uh, what we spent so well, we have at least half of the material left?
I think we've got about half of the material left, yes.
Okay. We're gonna have to watch that.
Very definitely.
Yeah, very definitely.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is, though, you, you know, this isn't something where we, we're gonna watch it, but we, we put salt down when we can put salt down, that's fair.
Uh, understood.
That's what contingent is for. Which we have spent how much of?
Zero so far.
All right, so let's go.
Just so we're clear.
Okay, so trees, uh, so, so as far as the roads go, we've had very few weather-related complaints. Actually, most towns seem to be pretty happy that we've gone to the all-salt mix. So that's been working pretty well. We have had some repeated issues with ice buildup from driveways and specific spots on a few roads. But those are long-term fixes, there's nothing we can do about that in plow season.
Are we?
That's getting drainage correct in the off-season.
Do we have a road database where we can make notes for stuff like asshole, like for instance? Let's say we're talking about, I don't know, Hendy Road or the Volker Road, that we can make a note as we're looking down the road for paving? We can have a database that we go and say, listen, we know we've got ice buildup on this driveway, let's start with this driveway. So that way, when we go to pave that road, we can address those issues?
We don't have anything specific for ice buildup. I've got kind of a master Excel spreadsheet of all the things that I know that we need to do, but unfortunately, a lot of it in public works has been oral tradition and resides in it, just yet.
So we should, we should probably start building a database on it.
Didn't we just have a street scan do our, our road survey?
We have had them do our road survey.
And, and just for my own, you know, I, I know I talk to you regularly, but where, where is that? Because that's the depository of the impact that I would tank. So that the ice buildup in certain spots. I would imagine street scan is gonna give you some kind of list in some kind of software, which I would assume would be Excel, that we could add a column.
Yeah.
These are spots, right?
Well, hey, so what is it, do we know what the database will come as from that?
Uh, I think we have the ability to export the data in a number of forms, so we can move it to whatever we want. But most of their data, you know, resides in their own internal database, basically.
And it would be interesting if you have access to that, we've got access to no, no exception. I mean, that's where all this information could be kept, because yes, we have those ice buildups and those dirty things.
Yeah, there is definitely some ability that needs to be scanned to annotate different sections of the road and build out, you know, the basic template that they.
I would say even if we can take their database and export it to a PDF and then make it a searchable PDF, and then you could add to it. So then, if you add a note, you say Hendy, blah, 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 when we go to do Hendy, we could just search street scan for everything on Hendy. Do you know what I mean? Could be something that's simple, but we need to come up with something that would.
And I, I'm assuming we could use that now, you know, in a given manner to, to add to it. I mean, listen, I, I would imagine they're gonna do something like Hendy's a very long road. We're gonna have to do segments by quarter mile, by eighth of a mile. And you're gonna be able to sit there and reference that eighth of a mile and sit there and say, I have an ice buildup on Lake Road in a certain spot, in a certain area, we have to fix that, so.
Correct.
I, I would think the street scan data would be where it's.
Good suggestion.
Yeah. Uh, again, we'll talk about this a little bit later when we come to 11C, but I would like to recommend that we authorize the over expenditure of the tree budget to, in the winter, when the ground is frothed or if by some chance it freezes again, to remove the trees between the hot river and the athletic fields to do the minimum amount of damage when we drop those trees. Twelve Center Street, as you all know, was sold. Uh, as far as the town hall goes, we've had a repeated problem with finding how to boil. So I've made two attempts at the solution. The first is just simply to put an electronic monitor in my office, so every day I look and see how much oil is in the tanks. And the second item is we've switched into a weekly filling schedule, because that seems to be what's required.
Broke it down, how much oil?
A big of ten.
Two hundred gallons.
It's a single two seventy-five.
Yeah, so you go up two thirty, you show.
Yeah, so this building goes through a lot of that.
That's a tough one.
It is, it is. We've finally, we think, fixed the phone system, at least temporarily, for the first time in a couple of weeks. All our phones work and people can actually call us. So that's been a nice change.
Do you think that we're south winds or are our technologies not?
So South Windsor has gotten back to me. I sent them another list of questions. I will probably pull the trigger on ordering all the equipment for all of the technology upgrades tomorrow. I'm presuming they answer my questions in a reasonable fashion, which I suspect they will.
And are we scheduled to do that yet?
So we are not, because at least the, the computer will acquire, the server will have to be built. So depending on which option we choose, I'm trying to choose an option where we'll have the server back by the end of January. The, their better option would have put, wouldn't, they wouldn't have even finished building it till sometime in March. So I think we're probably gonna not do that. And I think that's probably more than we need. So my goal, again, would be to get them in there by February. I've asked them to reach out to Len Coletal to do, because they want to do a walkthrough sometime pretty quickly for the rewiring portion of the job, to get that bid out. Okay, so those two things are, are in the works right now.
Okay.
Well, that was a great answer, and so February is your time. I'm waiting tomorrow.
I mean, I say that in that, but a month ago, I told you January, so, so, uh, we just want to know you're still working.
That's all right, so I'll, I'll do it on a little bit. That's alright, so I'll, I'll do it on a little bit. So, um, just as a question today, I know we have the power outage, was the, the, the system reboot easy today?
Yes, it rebooted itself fairly well.
Okay.
Um, and still working on the personnel policies, that, that's gonna be work in progress for a bit. And I would say we'll get to the budget notes either when we get to the budget portion of the presentation or in budget workshops, whichever you prefer.
Okay.
And that's it for me, unless you have any questions.
Uh, I don't see our, uh, treasurer here, do we know where they are at? Um, do we have a starting date yet for monitoring?
Uh, we do not, she's had some back and forth with the auditor, he hasn't replied. Um, he sent a note to her.
Okay, awesome, when you say back and forth, she hasn't replied.
No, she replied to him, he hasn't re-responded. But he, he basically in his first one said they were backed up a couple of weeks, they had to get an extension on a couple of their other accounts.
Which he, which he told us might happen.
Right, so they are, it's unclear exactly when they're starting, but certainly within the month, as far as I can tell.
Jim.
And what he said, yes.
Okay, great, that's awesome.
Um, but, you know, that's just what he said, so when he starts working on it, he starts working on it.
Okay, so let's go to six, old business, town personal policies, Eric addressed that, I don't agree with anything else related to that right now. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Community connectivity, right?
So that's still in the works. Jerry's supposed to have submitted this week some information back to the DOT and it is also before the inland weapons commission for approval, for weapons approval.
The town hall plan and room usage.
So everything that we planned on acquiring for that is here currently and it's in use. They've used it, uh, for the, um, for several of the senior functions, the young heart, um, and for their meetings. So unless we have other, uh, stuff to come, I think we're pretty well done with that. Um, I'm supposed to get the Wii device, we have the, the, uh, the monitor in, so as soon as the Wii device gets here, we'll hook the thing up and the seniors can start doing their Wii exercises, which is apparently something they were desiring to do.
I know we talked about this the other day, um, do we need something to put on the wall, like a, just as we're, we're running out of outlets on there?
I think we've gotta figure out where they actually want the person, what wall they wanted up against. But once we know where they actually want it, we'll figure out how to, to put a script in to, to get power to it.
I know, I know we talked about that, I know, if we decide that, that's, that's good to see where they want to put it first.
Right, right.
Um, maybe if it's something that's too far, let's just talk to the landlord, I guess, if they're allowed, for the bots.
Okay.
We can certainly do that, it'd serve us a helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, proposal, uh, proposal that comes from the transfer station, don't stop for a construction, you should show, is something new like this?
There is nothing new, do you want that to continue on the agenda as a placeholder, or do you want to remove the agenda?
Remove.
Going forward.
Okay.
I would remove it and add it and celebrate something else.
Okay, well, let's, we talked about we're addressing that with the transfer station, we'll bring it back to the table.
Fair enough.
Uh, new business, discussing that, come on, the following, uh, the proposed two thousand twenty board selectmen meeting packet calendar.
So I will explain this, I want to make it easier for everyone, including meeting members, um, the public, just to get a schedule, so everyone knows that the packet will be posted to the website, so I hope this helps, um.
Wait, would that be?
Yeah, thank you, and the, um.
Put it into the back tomorrow.
Yes, and the department's already, you know, followed this, um, last week, they got everything in by noon on Wednesday, and then I, I posted the packet on Thursday, so I think it'll work.
Did all the, did all the departments get you what you needed, or did it only get you seven?
Yes, all of the ones that normally do, yes.
By the way, I'm glad we're posting our presentations now, publicly download it, they can see what we have.
Yeah.
Um, that I think is.
Save your mailbox from getting caught up too.
That too.
So.
So one of the questions we had was, you know, who can post the thing on Thursday? And sure enough, there's a flurry of other stuff that comes in Friday and Monday. How do you want us to present additional material to you?
Just send us an email that says packet update.
Yeah.
Do you want us, do you want us to actually update the packet and then tell you? Or do you want us to send you an addendum of everything that's.
No addendum, no addendum.
Update the packet and then just put a note on the webpage, just next to the packet that says update pass on.
Yeah, could you have a?
Okay, that's a good idea.
Okay. Fair enough.
So do any of you download the packet practice?
I'm trying, I'm trying not to, that's why, it's.
I do, cause he does, whatever he does, he does, I download the packet, it's easier for me to keep it on my computer, I don't worry about the internet.
And, and dressing.
Alright, me too. I agree.
But if it absolutely has to be updated, it's like a must, I will update it and then let you know that it has been.
I mean, I know how Paul does it, the way I do it is Monday, the day of the meeting, I'm downloading, I'm looking at it, I look at it for the meeting, so I can download it and hey, I have it on my computer, so I can have it for the meeting.
So when you do the update though, um, obviously we're changing the date of the file to like a revision date?
Uh, yeah, for bodies.
And then pulling the old one.
I don't wanna set up precedence to say that, you know, yeah, for you to send me anything to.
No.
Update the packet five times, but if there's something that needs to go in there and it's important.
What page?
They, they should, they should follow your schedule, the departments should follow your schedule. The reason why I ask my question is I did not see all of the department information that I wanted to see in this package. So to me, the departments didn't give you everything they should, or not all of the departments. So to me, I would update it and just move on, I mean, especially with the departments, the departments have a hard task here, they're getting too much, they're, they're.
You're deep? That's not, that's not a first statement though.
Should be added. Why?
Because you are the first person to complain if you don't have the information you want at this meeting.
Correct.
So if it's on a Monday morning, let her update it, that way you can't complain, you get there and you have it.
I'm gonna complain no matter what.
Just saying.
So, I think everybody should just, uh, but, you know, okay, I don't have a problem. I, I'm only doing that for you and for her, because we gotta have a schedule, at least you have followed your schedule.
Yeah, I mean, obviously we wanna try to get them on his hand and remind them, hey, the packet's going out, if you want it on the schedule, thousand times to do it. Maybe they're not gonna get what they want on the schedule, but I think certainly department information, if there's something hanging up, the finance office or whoever, at least somebody will want that, so.
Yeah, I can be flexible, but I wanted to create some structure for it, yeah.
Yes, sure. Yeah, we're gonna get out the door at this time, we try.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, replacement purchase of cameras that we have other people.
Scott.
Yeah, this is, um, this got brought up because I think it's come to our attention that the two game cameras that we previously purchased were stolen.
I don't believe we purchased them, I think they were the rest of the state trooper's personal cameras and they were stolen.
Is that right?
I thought, I thought of us one selectmen using for object, they were girls' cameras, you know, purchased from us?
Yeah.
They were neat stolen, um, there was some, there was a lot of activity, um, around town that we liked to empower the trooper to use them at his discretion.
Okay.
So we thought it would be a good idea to, um, reverse the cameras and, 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 uh, a lot of these as needed. Do we know costs on those cameras? So, uh, Scott, do you have a, please, give us the handout?
You wanna talk away, okay, let's go.
These are just some game cameras, you know, uh, non-interferencing, so I think it's a result of bringing this brand. And this one sends the photographs right into the email address, so that is not to go in, um, hold with a speed card. And it's, these are ready, and this, the big one you see is, uh, the base camera, and then this smaller one's inserted to their base camera, then to the email address.
Yep.
There's a distance on the, the range that, yeah, you can't put them on anywhere in the town.
Yes.
Like, I think in an open country, it's like a model.
It's a court model, yes.
Yeah. Quarter mile in the woods or something, but, you know, if you want to put them in a, a great line of shot, you'll be able to get a quarter or half of them. And, and it's not a lot of time, and this is a nice camera.
You could add cameras up to what, sixteen?
Hundred.
To one cell, to one side of the ride, and it's, uh, how much a month, there was?
Forty-one thousand.
So it was forty if you paid monthly and thirty if you paid yearly for the other. It was, I don't know.
A friend of mine has this, Zach's seven, he says, but I'm not even forty-five.
Yeah, I, I know, it doesn't say that on the website, but that.
Well, actually, if we were gonna do this, it would be going into our next month, so we can get to that if we need.
Well, we had to.
Is there a chance it's gonna be?
Oh, we don't have a location.
The question is, do we wanna wait that long, since we had some issues that might. Be able to call us.
I did notice that there is, there is one line in the office, town hall office supplies, I guess, that have been spent, it's, it's for fifteen hundred dollars. There's been no expenditures on it, could we purchase one of that line?
I mean, you, you choose to do that, you are on the board of selectmen.
Was there anything that we're gonna be spending by July for town hall?
I honestly don't have.
I don't even know why I was in there.
I don't have, I don't have anything outlined for that at this point, no, correct. You know, time and time you buy a chair, you buy regular, you know, office furniture.
Yeah, there's a several line item.
That way there's, uh, furniture items.
There's an office supplies line item, and then there's a, I think there's a, some sort of furniture line item.
Well, if Scott and Jeff, Adrian, you obviously would use those cameras before, I mean, that I'm not a permanent holder or holder, I'm gonna use those types of cameras. So why don't you guys get the number that you think we should bring along this year?
That's probably.
What is the number, give us a number.
A furnace, forty-five, and you can turn it off whenever you want, you can start it, uh, go ahead and start it, turn it off.
So if you pay, and if you pay yearly, though, it's possible to, to activate us, that's unlimited.
Right.
The way they're planned to work, but you can start it lower tier, and then as you receive the data, it pushes to the next tier.
Okay, so I mean, I'm saying that for these three cameras, they're five hundred bucks.
Five, eight, five hundred and ninety.
Six hundred bucks, and then the service is forty dollars a month.
Yeah.
So we have five months left, initiate discussion, alright, so two hundred fifty dollars, so two hundred fifty dollars you want us to spend. This, this number of cameras. You want more cameras, I was about asking.
No, I, I think for right now, that's fine.
You think, oh, I, I, I.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I mean, it would be more prudent to start with this, see if this works, if it's costly, activity, and give the eye of the field, etc., or if there's issues that.
Now, are you, are you talking specifically about the athletic field? Cause remember you had a presentation earlier in the year for cameras for the public works department, which also included an option to strike people across the hot river and put multiple cameras at the field. So if you're really gonna commit to something that's costing forty-five bucks a month, you might be better off looking at that again rather than just.
It's probably just the law feels, I mean, it's, it's way recently we've had the repeating of any railroad signs, that type of activity, um, you know, we're setting up us.
So the advantage of this type of system versus apartment system, is apartment system, someone comes out, looks, sees where it is, then avoids it, right? These you can move around?
These we can move around, no vehicles are ordered, they.
Right, and, and putting that other thing across the hot river, Illinois stuff, that's, that's a six or nine month solution.
And how do you prevent them getting stolen again, so we're not thanks to these on a regular basis?
Well, that's the question, will they prevent it because they're uploading the data, so we can actually identify you? The problem with with cameras generally is that the data is on the car, so they steal it and they took the data, right? In this case, they actually upload the data to a website, man, they keep a copy of the car, so you've got an actual picture of the person that stole it.
They make mountains that are seen through.
They make, they're like a lot.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to work, yeah.
The relative.
It's also where you put them too, you try to put them in areas, these particular cameras have a black flash, so when they flash, you don't actually see it. Yeah, so unless someone's worried looking for it.
Okay, so we're talking a thousand dollars, do you wanna make a motion to sit there and purchase these cameras?
I, I was for it.
I did ask you if it was important, I asked you if you wanted to make a motion.
I will make a motion to budget up to a thousand dollars for this.
It's not much, it's spend.
To spend a thousand dollars, we can verify that if I'm in this building.
I'm gonna try to find it. Well, you're gonna make a motion and spend a thousand dollars and ask Eric to find the appropriate line.
Line, I will make the motion to spend a thousand dollars on callback cameras. And hopefully you can find somewhere to make that one.
One second.
Contingency.
Oh, okay.
You're there now.
You guys cannot make this laugh, huh, you guys? Alright, any other discussion, anybody got this thing? Anybody got this thing, you're good, alright, all those are favorable?
Aye.
All those are closed. Eric, I'm sure you'll do your best and find an appropriate line item, she spent that thousand dollars.
Contingency.
I also, I feel like, I feel like I'd be a call out to the, who could take from, but I don't have a. Uh, well, that'll hopefully fine, so, okay, so new business still, Saturday, August twenty ninth, the Rhode Island messages, Connecticut relay, for use of town hall.
We have a presentation?
Uh, we do not have a presentation. Uh, myself and Jeff met, heard the board was electing for West of Alaska too, with Matt as the rep for the Hartford Foundation. And what we asked him to do was approach Benjamin Franklin and use that as the transition point as opposed to Center Street. Reason being, there's a chance of Center Street will be under construction during that period of the connectivity plan. So he agreed, uh, are, the first selectman reached out to Benjamin Franklin, made the initial connection, and Matt has subsequently reached out to them. So they have resubmitted the permit with Benjamin Franklin as the connection point, which basically takes it out of the town's hands, other than the road crossings, from my perspective, so I don't.
So what about reversion for using the trooper and that kinda stuff?
We don't need the trooper because it will be on the.
Yeah, no need for the trooper, we're not crossing any serious.
What about parking phones, vans?
Well, you're gonna use Benjamin Franklin as the primary block, probably some of the field there, and you'll be able to use Mariposa Road to low enough falling road, that shouldn't be an issue.
And the Hartley area, lowland group as well.
Correct.
My, my discussion with Benjamin Franklin, the town needs to, um, get a certificate of insurance for that, for that, that account.
Well, the applicant would need to get a certificate of insurance, the town, the house, for them to do the event, I would presume.
Yes.
Yeah, that's not gonna be awesome.
Correct, it's not our benefit.
Right, I understand, I understand, it's not our benefit. We're, we're, okay.
No, I just wanna be clear, I, I, if it becomes a situation where they need something, the monster has to come back to this.
We have a long list.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing they're using at this point is the, uh, it would be Mariposa as far as top resources.
Are they, are they asking for cert?
Cert, they're asking for cert, and, um, I, I knew they didn't have a recent application, I also asked them to resubmit today and I also asked them to ensure that we would have marshals at every crossing, and he said, yes, he was gonna supply it through cert volunteers, at least on every road cross.
I don't, I guess, I mean, I know we're saying it's a low-lying road, but there's a lot of vans for this thing, a lot of vans.
Correct.
I just.
Hundreds.
I'm just saying, you know, that's a lot of, you know, oncoming traffic, you know, lights in people's faces, there needs to be something, somebody out there, you know, not just the crossings.
Okay, who do you want where?
See, see, again.
Cause they're gonna, they're gonna, they have to park their vans to go out and support, right?
Well, the way that it was discussed, and the way that Jeff and I presented it to Benjamin Franklin, the many Fuji brothers, let's say, if they was use their front lot for parking, they will use their facility for parking. And then the other parking could be taken out on Merritt Valley and everything else, you're going to have enough room for parking there. Yeah, we discussed that Merritt Valley is a normal road, basically, uh, they park them off there, while the rest of it, the impact would be minimal. I mean, but the majority of it will.
Majority, yes.
But you had mentioned Lake Road too.
No, that's certainly a domino property on Lake Road.
So there's an existing parking area on Lake Road. I don't think there's gonna be any way, other than parking a bunch of fire trucks in it, I don't think there'd be any way to prevent people from parking there, so they're likely not parked there.
Well, if this is our area, just, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, I would assume the cert or, or someone from the relay race is going to have to deal with parking. So what the, what the relay race does is they issue, uh, they call it a bible, and it basically says you stop, says where to park, where to park, where to go, provides their, their distance directions. So then I would recommend at some point, I would, the three of us, we could get to Benjamin Franklin, and you could read the law, so they say this is how it's gonna park there. And you're adopted, and then whether cert does it, or the relay race does it, I'm looking at them, make sure they park there. Would it acceptable that when people work at the rest? I mean, as a sign, I told Eric, I did suggest, yeah, well, farmers market on that property. It is a very nice location, has a stoplight, could be potential to have a, a new, like, not this year, but down the road if you're moving forward, you can own a road, it would be a vast one.
Thank you.
So, but we should do something with them to say, this is the bible, here's who's gonna coordinate this on first. So, we'll figure that out, yes?
Um, can I speak on behalf of the library house?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um, I saw on the application that one of the things they were looking for was use of the library.
I know.
Okay, good.
Is that, okay, this is getting a little, I'm sorry.
Because library, we'll discuss it, and we're hoping that day when you want people parking there, we had a ton of support hot in last year, writing issues, so we're happy to hear that libraries offer. And you.
Oh, we're still gonna put the porta potties at the library.
That was a problem?
I said, we're still gonna put all the porta potties at the library.
Um, so what I, what I can do is, I think I can respond to him tomorrow, and just say, you know, we need, we need, we need somebody there to make sure that, uh, traffic and full of the parking is manned here.
Yeah, I just.
And I'll CC everybody, so when he responds, uh, if they have more questions, we can.
Because I'm, I'm worried just being here, just, the reality is, again, you know, this is very, very bad, it doesn't, exactly, I know all that most of all, you know, and we're, we're passive guys. Yeah, I think last time, we both kind of came through, we were like, right?
Or. Yeah, it's gonna be the same time. Honestly, it was one of those nights where I said, I'm gonna look at, wow, we had some congress, you know, we had a lot of people coming to the community, um, give the license.
Which you may have, you may have people from Massachusetts, or the East, or. Yeah, well, sure, the East, or.
Okay, it might be a tremendous, uh, progress, and that person local, uh, organizations in town, like, make some money, show them followers.
Yeah, to make the cups go, to sell some, some, uh, monsoons chapels, or, or water.
Some, yeah, I'm just, um, you know, stress was possible, but we used it for dollars.
Alright, so where are we leaving that? So they submitted a permit application, are we telling them they need a permit? Are we telling them they don't need a permit?
Oh, they need a permit.
They need a permit, because they're gonna be burning on the town.
Okay.
They, they, they should actually, so what I'll do is, I'll take that to him tomorrow, say he needs to provide a certificate of insurance to Benjamin Franklin.
Yeah.
He's provide certificates of assurance to the town.
Yeah.
Need to provide some way to monitor traffic and steer events to the parking locations.
Yes. Okay, that would, that would be great.
Is there any other concerns?
Scott.
I'll just, I'll voice those concerns, I'll CC everybody, and see what comes back, if he's agreeing with the next, we should go, sir.
We can pick this up again next month.
Well, do you wanna do it now, or do it with the following conditions?
No, first one.
I don't think that's much by our duty, is that why they came with the, I mean, the racism is obvious, so we can iron out those issues next month. I mean, they're, they're, we're gonna get it done, you can tell them that we're just worried, I mean, that, that we found that the local businesses.
I mean, are you, are you saying, you're basically saying you want, you wanna pass it down, contingent?
With those, yeah, those conditions are bad, and he comes back to us and says, okay, I'll do that, and it's, it's a, we're done. Next month, he has all the things that come up.
I'm good. Is there any advantage for him or otherwise, here this year?
Since they need to put together, they need to put together the course, you know, figure out the distances, it just gives them a lot of advantages. They didn't, but we can wait until next month, I mean, just tell them.
I'm just always, these tend to believe, we, we, it's almost gonna be up to everyone.
Do they need certificates of evidence, and make it work for me?
You wanna make a motion outside, and.
No, we're good.
Now, the application form, our normal application form has sign-offs by fire chief, frozen state prefer, parents Edo for emergency management.
Yep.
Do we want?
Yep.
You, or we expect the shop employees around all the.
Once they have all their stuff in place, yeah.
Okay. Correct?
Yes.
And everyone's done from last year, have it done again. Okay, um, Sunday, April twelve, Hopman Hodges Rails to Trails five K, remember you have Jim Hodges, proceeds to support the nonprofit friends of Valley Falls, and Tom Vigo to support the upkeep of the Rails to Trails. This, this came from Ken Platt, who did the, uh, the summer races at Center Street, who gave us the donation for about, it was about six hundred dollars this year.
That's great.
Um, he, uh, I saw on, uh, Christmas Day, and he asked if we would be interested in hosting this race. It's, it's traditionally a valid vernon, on Center Street, and since we had such a good, uh, uh, relationship last year with the summer races, he was asking if it would be a possibility, we'd be interested in hosting this event on Easter Sunday. Have sort of, anybody have a call?
Nope.
Alright, so you have the. Well, send the application, pull the application out, and we'll prove it to you, that's good. Can I do our district share, educational services committee? Is there anything for us to do? No, I mean, it's not, it's not our, it's not our, so, our members have met for you?
Yep.
Has the board of education been stopping you about meetings, schedule?
Needs, no, they were meeting here back from one more committee member, so once they get back from that person.
So the only one is, when they actually get something, start with that. Alright, appointment at shared services committee, including other names and trail services, um, we had applicants, we had northern applicants that are listed here, oh, maybe not. We had, uh, we had applicants, Susan England and Amy Marsh, uh, two board of select members, decided to leave the one, and elect ready to meet, and one more line mention, uh, to turn, so. So we need Susan England and Amy Marsh on our committee, so we need to make motion to appoint both. This, this committee, who was on this committee for us, didn't you part of the survey?
No.
You did not, you decided to wait.
So since all the other members are on something else, I should be one of the members, and who else have other challenges? Scott, how's it going? You got time for this one?
No, sure.
Okay. Well, we don't have two members probably in this.
Any clue on how often a committee with me?
Daily.
As often as Eric wants us to meet, right? As, as often as Eric gives us an opportunity to say, this is an opportunity for us to do these calls. No, no, what you say, Eric, vote maintenance?
Let me see, school board, but it's board, website committee, what about yours?
Oh, here, what you want?
I would be on the committee one way or the other, and this is an ex officio, I'm not a voting member on the committee, but I would certainly be part of it.
Well, I can serve as two members.
Yeah. I'll rock it.
Who would call it?
Sure.
Get that going, get that going. You're all here. Yes, I'm one of them, yeah. Eric, so you, you tell me which one you are, and I'll.
That's in change.
This is official, this is right here.
Oh, I'm calling here. That's.
Where's the camera?
Put a blind trap.
This is a tail.
Yeah.
He won. You're all right.
It's a tail.
And tail.
Oh, it's a tail.
He won. He's not a. I was gonna say, I was like, I was, I was gonna tell him it was a tail. And he's calling her, I was like, you were kidding, and we forgot, you know, and. It's his role, so you guys, you guys.
We, we, we.
I'm gonna take it, I'm like, I'll give you a toss in the mouth.
So I'm assuming that it's Jeff McGuire and Adrian Mandel, is that my, some?
Yes, so, so why don't we do it all at once, or sue, we, Amy Marsh, Jeff McGuire, Adrian Mandel, and we have a board of finance company, should I get?
Mark, has the board of finance made any decisions, or none?
No, we haven't, we're just having, yeah.
Okay.
God, if we were. Do we have a, can we have these before their meeting, figure out, do you think this is gonna be a, a new schedule?
Well, I'm assuming you wait to find, get all your members together before you decide on your schedule.
It might be easier for his members to know when he goes to next one.
Okay, so you wanna assemble the other four members, figure out what things work?
Can we do it Monday night, can we, can you, or two, do you sit there? Just do another Monday night that's not busy, with other meetings and other groups.
Sure.
Amanda, what Mondays, what, according to the time calendar, please?
You're actually figuring February, you have the calendars in terms of paper pages, so you can all look. Planning something is the third Monday, but it was moved to the fourth Monday because of the two holidays, so perhaps the fourth committee could be the option, is that right?
One year should tell.
Nope, that's the Republican town committee, right?
This is a small.
But Tuesdays are available.
This is a smaller committee than I think, most likely.
So this committee can certainly meet in the administrator's office, so it wouldn't be a, the issue with that. Um, obviously, I would be on the committee, I end up in some meeting or another most Monday nights, so.
Don't we have a spot at the school?
So how about Tuesday?
Yeah, what's the situation with the school?
It's not a location issue, we can find a location, the issue is just simply that, you're, from my perspective, I, I end up going to an awful lot of Monday meetings. I'm not saying I wouldn't make this one, I would, but Tuesdays are better.
Tuesdays, that again?
No, I guess there's Thursday.
Tuesday, so why not do it?
We can have the same week as the board.
Mark, when, Mark, what, what is your next meeting?
Next meeting is the twenty-second.
Okay, so how about Tuesdays are important, for initial meeting, then we're not scheduled.
Tuesday, February fourth?
Pumpkin or mushroom?
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, the Latin.
February eleventh.
Sure, Mark, sure.
Okay, Mark, so February eleventh, we're issued for the first meeting, so.
What time? Seven?
The time, we're two, seven.
Yeah, sure, fine.
Okay, seven.
And?
How do we, why do we do seven?
In the town hall.
Let's, uh, let's put out a dual, set the time, maybe, alright. Can you do that?
Do you have to go home?
Yeah.
Do that.
Okay, appointment of community senior, center, building, committee.
Do we have to make a motion?
Oh, yes, but make a motion.
I motion to approve the following members to a shared services committee, Susan England, Amy Marsh, Jeff McGuire, Adrian Mandel, and Liz American.
Yeah, the board, what, the board.
Term ends, expires July first, two thousand twenty-one. Committee to examine ways that the town can, and over can save money and better serve the town by sharing services with other towns and entities.
Over there.
Aye.
Over the post. Appointment of community senior, center, building, committee applicants, Karen Hutter, Ed Swazie, Kirk Dogg, Ed Serris, Susan England, Bert Stanley, John Bennett, Kirk Dogging, provided me a letter of recension, just for us to be, like, recen. You remove his name from consideration.
Correct, is that correct? You wanna?
I give them a letter.
See, you, you, I will not, I don't think you should, uh, consider this one, since we are pointing your, your, to the other committees.
Yeah, agreed.
And we're picking two, not one.
Two. I know Karen Hunter is here, and Serris is here, I didn't see her.
She didn't.
Excuse me, who are you? I'm just saying, who is here? Karen Hunter is here, she, she is live, and Serris is here, Bert Stanley, and I don't think he's here, and Don Bennett is definitely not here. Okay? Anyone, anybody have any recommendations?
I actually am in favor of Don Bennett.
Okay?
I was just reading through the letters, I'm just thinking, you know, whoever we're, whoever we're choosing, or you should maybe have a, some sort of background in something like this.
Well, it's, it's kind of fresh, it's gonna give us a different perspective, that's maybe it's been, you know, very, it's. And that's, they die, they've been on anything a long time, you know, he also, you know.
Pretty vocal.
Very vocal, he's vocal, but he also has a business, he's got a very low side, and most importantly, he's also a senior, so I think that, that plays to what we're looking for.
And I know Karen does a lot with the seniors, so gonna take that in consideration also, she talks with them, and kind of knows where they're coming from, I think.
Would Karen, Karen be willing to be our liaison, and talk to the seniors, and provide feedback, or ideas being floated around?
Um, actually.
How many members are you?
Looks like, well, looks like we're still discussing, so, um, I also like, you know, Bert Stanley has a background in development, and so, now that the Center Street is off the table, we're still looking to develop this property, that makes it be helpful.
How many members are you putting on the committee? Do you want to, four? I, I, I don't know, you can go too long. Can I help with a number, there's, can anyone decide who we're gonna put?
Well, we originally said two, right?
Originally said two, so we only have five.
I, I, I like the idea, Karen, I think, it, it's more important to have Karen involved, if, you know, I mean, from her perspective, a senior, she's really probably her important, plus the design is set, and we know where it's going, than it is actually getting it set, personally. Plus, the design is set, and we know where it's going, then it is actual getting it set personally.
So, you're saying do that, but have the, how we're still involved?
I mean, she wants to be involved, I know, but she would go and take it more importantly, it's more important that, that we're staying to develop and increase the property and, and have, you know, more of an impact as far as seniors.
Eric, if you're hard on the point four, to be vocal, can you appoint four?
You could, I mean.
But everyone.
If you appoint however many you want, you originally said five, I would ask if you're gonna do it, that you make sure to appoint an odd number, so there's less of a likelihood of a tie vote.
Well, you.
You could be a voting member.
I would assume I would be a non-voting member.
Yes, I, I, I'm gonna go this way, I'm gonna go this way. I think all public people are, are good candidates.
And.
Yeah, we, we've been talking before.
Mr., Mr. Ray, Mr. Denly, not, not being my most favorite person. So.
So, why would I concern that? Ed, actually, Ed is not in CFP anymore. Right, you're off CFP now, Ed? What's that, you're on CFP still? So, I feel like it's oriented committee that's gonna be affected by this.
Yes, he's got it.
So.
Are we, I mean, listen, Ed Serrisley is the one person with the most experience, most destructive. So. I, I, listen, I have no problem with all four.
Yeah, I think everybody has a unique.
I wouldn't.
That one that they run for the table, so I think it's in our best interest.
Put them all on.
Put them all on.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, everyone.
You all agree?
I'm all right. I motion to approve the following members to a senior slash committee senate committee. Karen Hunter, Ed Serrisley, Bert Stanley, Don Denly, Scott Berson, Jeff Murray, and Diane Chiquet. Term expires July first, two thousand twenty-one. Committee to determine how and where the town can best construct a senior slash community senate.
Second.
Further discussion, fellows in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The charter admission commission. And I only think we have one of these items to deal with. If somebody made a motion regarding the discussion and possible action design, terminate the charter admission agreement since two thousand eighteen.
I will make a motion that we. This man destroyed that.
Dissolve.
Dissolve.
There is a motion, okay.
Somebody should have the, the official copy to sign on behalf of the town. Jeff's copy, Ed's copy, your place, that has all the signature blocks on it. It's basically the resolution of the town's attorney, printed up with all your signature blocks on it.
I made a motion that the, the representative selectmen. Dissolve. The commission informed on June sixth. We got two dates on here.
Two thousand days.
Yeah, but there's two days, June sixth and June twenty eighth.
Initiated, there's one date, and then there's another date.
Okay.
That's because there's a statute board requirement that there's less than, there's, you only have thirty days from the time you start the process to the time you have to appoint.
Okay, so, um. Yeah, but which date are we using, the sixth or the twenty eighth? Uh, it doesn't say on either one of these.
You're just dissolving the commission.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion that we dissolve the charter commission formed in June of two thousand eighteen.
Uh, do I have a second? Second. Further discussion? The timeline is with the charter commission, so.
Yeah.
We have to dissolve this.
Yeah.
At this point in time, so, fellows in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's get moving. Establishment of budget cards are all time in speech. Which entities are we speaking of, and the board of education is one of those, would you like to? Any others, anyone else would like to sit there and dress as hard as dollars to target the budget, or any others?
I, I, I mean, I personally am still kind of looking through the budget, I've had multiple discussions here, Eric. On different departments, on different areas, looking around, so. I think the town size still will work, but.
Okay.
But we're definitely working on multiple things. Board of education, obviously, um, we need to, they've asked for repeatedly some sort of rights, that's what we're looking for from that. It's, it's also kind of from now, we're sharing, uh, sharing, and then, you know, she's made a clear, some, some sort of question for us.
Good. Well, um, members of the board went to the state department of education meeting that is helping to bring on the MBR, or the municipal budgeting requirement. Related to, um. Departments of education. We all received documentation as to the town of Andover is not subject to the municipal budgeting requirements that minimize the amount of reduction that happened at the, uh, board of education level. Even if the town of Andover was subject to MBR. The documentation from the state department of education said the total. Educational budget in the community can be reduced by six hundred, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. That's if we were subjected to MBR, but since we are not subject to MBR, we can make, uh, additional costs if we as a community chose to. But it's not, that was the board will recommend, but that's so everybody understands the situation related to the state department of education and potential clearing. So, the question that I would ask the board of education members, if. We could recommend that they make. Any law that the state department of education said that they could reduce their spending by six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. What is the number, or is it, we can help you sit there and tell, board of education, shoot. Current, I'm not remembering, it is. Budgeted department of, for DES. It was one million, one hundred. I'll get you the number, actually, I can pop in, make it easier. Eric, what do you have for the numbers?
For a budget number. So, I don't know what the current budgeted number last year was, I believe, four point three six million. And I believe they requested roughly an eight percent increase, but I didn't write down the exact number.
Who's that? Does the PGS has already requested an eight percent increase?
Correct, that's, that's what the board called. There, the preliminary presentation from, to the board had was an eight percent increase. Over last year's budget.
The improved budget for last year was four million, sixty-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, let's have some discussion as to what we're, we're looking at, what we're gonna try to request a target. Anybody? Well, if, if the stadium connected is telling us that because of our population decline for schools, that we can cut the school budget from six hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Let's start our discussion together. Anybody? I mean, this is not an easy topic, this is not, you know, we have to discuss it, though, we have to choose something to, to try to get them to be more responsive to the overall community, so. Let's have a discussion.
I think. My personal take on having lots of these meetings, yeah. Look through their budget. To the level of, they say, because they don't lose all the news headlines. You know, the state is saying we can cut, you know, if, if they were MBR, we could cut six hundred plus last year. I don't think realistically they can cut six hundred and still have a good quality nation, I think it's a little, that's a little too much, personally. Um, I think it's more realistic to say, you know, we're looking for, you know, two thousand dollars per student, give or take off their two hundred student number, so, I would suggest four hundred thousand. They. I would say there's definitely some, some changes they're gonna have to make to get to that, but the changes are fairly easy. Um, if they so choose to do it.
So, now are either six hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-six, or four hundred thousand dollars, and then discussions for where we think we might wanna ask?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm optimistic that when we start meeting with the shared services committee, that hopefully we can share some things and bring in, bring in some cost savings out.
I, I think the problem is, though, is that, although optimistic about the shared services committee, I'm, I'm a little concerned in that.
That's long term, right?
Well, it's long term, and also, this, the, the committee is not small, it's gonna be super ongoing, it went from seven people to eleven people. You know, it's, it's, it's massive, so, that can be a little unwieldy, that means it's also gonna take longer to line people's schedules up to get meetings together, and by the time they get out there into the new buildings, you know, we were on it, by the time we get out there to the new buildings, you're not gonna be able to factor this, this project. So, I think it's unrealistic to expect those numbers, and, but I think four hundred is doable, with some, some minor changes in, in class structure that they had looked at, um, you know.
Could we talk to you?
I think that depends who you talk to, I think there's, there's, there's some parents that certainly want the more smaller classes, and I think there are, you know, some people that look at this and say, well, my kid went through, and, you know, DES, the classes were, you know, four, twenty-four, and, and he wasn't in the world, so, you know.
So, are you thinking that their cut, the four hundred thousand dollar cut is gonna be cut by teacher or students?
That's not, we can't, yeah, I mean, they could look at, one of the other things I think we should, in part doing this, one of the other things that I would like to, to put out there as an offer to them, to help them get there, is that in the past, the town has shared, at administrative level, finance personnel with that. That's something that changed when Sally came over, um, it changed about the, the town that shuffled to bringing in more efforts, um, and, and that's fine, but. By doing that, and by us having a full-time person as well, it's costing both the town and the school more money. You know, if we were to go back to the situation where we have that person for two days, we had that person for two days, um, you know. Or even if they were three, two, if we're hiring a full-time person, you know, um, they need an extra day or whatever, but the point being, it was done before, we're not asking for something that's not, that they're still precedent for. Um, it will help offset their costs as well as ours, you know, um, to what extent, I, you know, I'm not sure exactly, but I would say that we're looking at at least a fifty thousand dollars, say.
In the end, it's all the town's money, regardless of its education.
Sure.
It's all our, so, I think your idea of going to the shared services is great. We realistically have to get to the target, and the only way for them to reach that target, when you look at their budget as majority, a significant percentage of their budget is salaries, and teacher salaries, so, to do it, they have to make some decisions.
Yeah, I mean, I think they, I think they jumped because there was some concern about classes this year, and I, and I understand that concern, but I think it sets a, a, a bad precedent for having these successful small classes, personally, and that's why.
Will they, will they make a decision to, to Paris, and, so.
They split class first.
Right, right, but then they, then they looked into things and said, well, instead of splitting those next two classes, they put Paris.
Well, if, if, if we think that the six hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar number is too high, are we all comfortable with requesting a reduction of four hundred? Is there any, anyone on the board that feels four hundred thousand dollars is too high? Anybody? Anybody? Okay. We, one, one comment I had is, I think it was two or three months ago, Sally was here, when we discussed the shared services committee, and I asked her, I said, how much does it cost per student for a elementary? She said nineteen thousand five hundred. So, if you do the math, that adds up to three point one million dollars. So, where's the other money being spent? I mean, I've asked, I've asked the superintendent career full time, consistently, to get the books on what it is per student, and to this day, I still don't have a number.
Well, probably, depending upon the reporting, if the number changes, so.
She, and they continue.
We just, we just keep plugging that all the time.
Okay, but, but our main, our main, Jeff, are you comfortable with four hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good number because they're sending that money at the end of the year, right?
Yeah.
So.
Well, they're not gonna do it this year.
Not this year, because they, and, and it, it has to vary, everybody, so, in the past, you know, they cut the budget by seventy-five, and then the end of the year, they sent back, you know, two hundred, whatever cost, so. Realistically, there was money in that budget to be cut, and every time we, but unfortunately, every time we asked for it from the board of finances perspective, we were repeatedly, they couldn't cut it because of MBR, they couldn't cut it because of MBR, now it turned out, that was true, unfortunately, that, that the board of finance was lied to by the superintendent, but, but that's a frustration for me having been on the board.
Well, because I'm listening to that, with, um, in, in small, don't forget the paper, because that's not what we're here for, considering, I understand.
No, just being candid, people have something to know.
Let's just come up with a number.
But people have come to me and said, from the board of finance, why didn't you cut their budget? We didn't cut their budget because we were told we couldn't cut the.
You were, you were, correct, and, and the board of education was also told that they were subject to MBR, so there was, there was information that should have been out there.
I'm not going to hear the board of education.
So, I'm not, I'm telling you, it's kind of lame, you know, let's come up with a number, let's put it back in the board of education's lap, and that's, that's what we should be doing, right? We don't even have to argue over what they do, we just have, we're doing this as a global standpoint, saying, as a community, you need to relax, it's all state, it's base fund, you're first group of class, and we then need to sit there and utilize, we don't wanna raise everybody's taxes. Because in the end, if all the school budgets go up, and we want to sit there and get things done, roads and other, we're gonna come back and ask for our largest taxes to be paid. We all choose not to, right? I'm gonna agree with that. Alright, so, I'm asking for a motion related to the four hundred thousand dollar number, if no one on this board has any significant issues to not do it. Alright, someone make a motion with that.
Adrian.
Somebody make a motion? I'll make a motion. I, we're gonna ask, I make a motion that we request the, and the board of education to reduce their twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, um, potential budget to three million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Who was that?
Uh.
What's that?
A trade. So, the total cost reduction is four hundred thousand dollars. So, any further discussion? Okay, and all those are here?
Aye. I'd like to, I'd like to also make a motion that we request the board of education to consider sharing with the town, the top of the funding, or some other. to consider sharing it with the town, the top board of finance, or someone else known in the past.
I agree a hundred percent. Anybody have further discussions on that issue?
Sorry.
It's not sensitive.
Not sensitive, all right? All right, um.
My, my question about that is, so we talked about the shared services, um, committee. That's like a long-term thing? What you're proposing is?
They can do this this year. You know, they can, and we're, you know, we can put together the requirements that we both need, um, and hire a person or, you know, obviously you open up to intervals first. You know, Laura could apply for that, you know, or, or could apply for that. And then you could have one, one person doing the, the two jobs. Because right now, we're paying for benefits for old people, you know, we're, it's, it's a substantial savings and it was, like, again, there's precedent for this, so.
Well, if you think, if anybody comes under the shared services committee and this, this last, um.
They're talking about something, they're talking about something on their street goals or?
Yeah, this last motion we've had, I think they can decide to take that to cut.
That's not.
We wanna specifically offer, I'd like to specifically offer this one personally.
Well, I, I.
So that it's out there for this budget. Because I guarantee they're not gonna, they're probably having any other shared services, well, after this budget, so.
Well, my, my, my thought on this is that we kind of restructure how we deal with our financial issues within the community and we create a finance department. And that finance department will be staffed less than what currently being.
Yeah.
So the issue is not necessarily, if this is, this is giving the board of education a, um, a reduction opportunity to get to the four hundred thousand dollars. But this is interim.
Yeah.
This isn't interim.
But, but they, but another reason that this is so important to me is that, um, us and the school are going to software. So we're gonna be sharing our new software that we're implementing. People will have that implemented this summer because our current accounting system is going away. So that accounting system covers the school and us. So this will make it so much easier to have a one-person of both sides, same software, all in, interactive. So, you know, it makes sense to try to make this transition now as part of that software as well.
So is the motion going to be to establish a new finance department? And where are we motion, I mean, because?
If you wanna amend it to that, that's fine. Yeah, I'll talk about that.
Okay.
Start the shared services.
Well, it, it's really get to, uh, an appropriate level on that part. The number of transactions that we're like, first, I mean, from a global standpoint, what is that?
It should actually be easier than it was in the past because the town is going to, but, um, we're going to, like, um, payroll as well, um, just school already on that, so. There's so many things down the line that would make this something easier than it was in the past.
Well, I just think it's gonna be more transparent because if we ask for, for amounts, we have somebody that's.
Well, yeah, I mean, to a reason, we could actually get a, I agree, but irrelevant of all that, this is the time to do it and to save both entities. So it makes sense to really do this. And again, precedent from, from previous, this was done for umpteen years, you know?
That's what I do. So.
If you wanna amend it to, I don't judge you for that, I'm in.
Okay, so the motion would be to establish a finance department that coordinates all financial activities between the board of education and the town.
That would accomplish all, sure.
Second.
So we need to vote the amended, which, if you wanna help?
Sure, um. Who seconded?
Stop.
Scott did? All right, so Scott's seconded, so, uh, any further discussion on that topic?
I don't think there's a motion.
I don't think there's a motion. You're good, yeah? All those are here?
Aye.
All right. Um, okay, propose a budget?
No, you gotta make, that was to amend the motion, I gotta make a vote on the motion.
Okay, now a vote on the motion, amended motion. All those are here?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, the proposed budget, Paris?
So you should all have a copy of the rough cut of the proposed budget in front of you that has the, there's a few things not in there, but the vast majority of the budget is, uh, there. So I don't think we're gonna have time to really go into depth on that. If you have specific questions and you, you know, you can certainly answer them.
I would appreciate if you'd actually send out a budget summary.
What do you mean by a budget summary? Here's your summary, sixteen three pages.
No, I, I want you to have to go through and show us what you've changed and why you changed it, not a lot. So. Has a budget summary, not now.
If you look through, the, the ones that I had any influence on are all annotated as to what the reason was in the minutes column.
So this is not, did you strip out Barbara's notes? I don't think this is to really go through, like, all the annotations. Did you strip out Barbara's annotations for stuff from last year?
Uh, probably not.
Because she had annotations from last year, which is why I mentioned them, so. So there may be more annotations there.
So you want a budget summary line by line, everything that's?
Not line by line, anything you made a major change to or off? If it's not an annotation.
You don't want that, I agree. Maybe do a little bit more, but, um, while we're discussing the budget, what are we doing for our budget, our check fees? Maybe we want to, as a board, get together to go over these items. Do you want to do some sort of other faculty that establishes?
Yeah, I, I personally think if Paris sends that out, then we can look through and start sending in questions. And then let's see how many questions we come up with at the next meeting and then decide how many workshops to do.
I agree.
I mean, because really, um, I mean, we have, you know, certainly we have some input out of this budget. I, I personally did cut almost a hundred grand of that budget last year on the board of finance. So there's not a lot of trimming to be done. I think now it's, we did the trim last year, this year it's rebalancing and trying to address shortfalls in other areas, whether it's painting or public works or have you, so. And then shopping because we've had personnel changes, things like that. So a lot of the things that are in there don't, it really are adjustable per se. You know, I mean, personnel things, we really, we know we need a, a zoning agent that is spending hours. We know we need, you know, contractually this many hours, so. There are some things we can change, um, and certainly we'll get some discussion on that, but.
Well, let's just make sure that as a board, we all understand the timing, that this needs to be submitted.
Sure.
So why doesn't it need to be submitted?
I mean, ideally, this should be moving over to the board of finance, um, the end of February.
End of February, yeah?
I mean, it's been submitted to us, the board of finance, the budget is slated to be April, so. But I don't think we wanna do that, so.
So moving to our next meeting or schedule a couple workshops, that's kind of.
I think if we do our next meeting and then we look at, you know, we're probably, I think if, based on our next meeting, we'll probably need one or two workshops, but not one or more.
Our next meeting is the town.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So if we get to know what a fifteen, what's it is?
Fifteen to February?
March.
Okay.
That's our worst case.
Okay. We'll check with the board.
So between now and the next meeting, what you want from me is you want a summary that outlines the major changes in the budget and the budget carry reasons, am I correct?
Yeah, so generally, you're, you're gonna go to the board of finance with an explanation of your budget, right? I'd like you to do that same explanation of your budget for us first, right? And so in that way, A, with your practice, but B, we'll get a better explanation of what you're putting before us because we can all look at those lines, but they don't really mean a lot until they have context, right? So whether it's structural changes, personnel changes, you know, explain to us why your budget is what it is, what those numbers really represent for you for, you know, not necessarily individual departments per se, if there are major changes, certainly. But holistically, what you're trying to do with that budget and where you're trying to go with it.
Sure.
Right? And I think, obviously, we know the biggest focus is gonna be on, you know, uh, public works and what we're doing there and what our goals are there and why. Um, and some history to that. But beyond that, I don't know that there's a lot of changes other than maybe the building department has had some, some pretty big stuff, you know? But basically, it's, we need to kind of understand from you and then you'll obviously have to make this in presentation where we approve that to get it over to the board of finance, so.
Now, is the board of selectmen based on your decision tonight? If you want to go to a combined finance department, are you expecting me to build into the budget a combined finance department for next year? And how do you foresee that playing out?
Yeah. Um, I would say no, not until the board of education responds very well. I think right now, we have to assume that that's not gonna be the case. But if, obviously, in this budget cycle, we still have, I worry, March, April, right? Um, so hopefully, in the next three months, they tell us that they're supporting that and they would be willing to do it. Otherwise, we would be, we'll have to then reverse course. Currently, you have the budget both the way it is. Certainly, it would be beneficial to have a contingency planning. So figure out what those numbers would look like and have it ready to plug in. But I would not plug them into the budget workings yet, personally. Do you disagree?
I do.
See you shaking your head, sorry.
Um, you made the decision to move the town in a certain direction. We should sit there and have that put forward in the budget that we presented. If it cannot get, if it doesn't happen over the next two, three months, then we adjust. But is implied determining how much money we could potentially save in the future fund or somewhere else?
I don't know.
So.
I'm at a difficulty the way, you know, I'm optimistic that this is so central that they'll actually agree with, without an existence, but.
No problem.
That's wrong.
Yeah, but I totally understand, I mean, listen, it's a, it's a literary budget.
I saw the justice of your marching march.
Okay.
And so you're assuming that that combined staff is gonna be a total of two people, a total of one person, a budget director and a accounts receivable person? What is it that you're looking for in that?
Two, it would be two, two people. One full-time person and an administrative assistant for the department. More accountable person than accountable or available.
So you're looking to reduce it to one full-time, one part-time person?
Correct. Like, now we have like, um, one point eight person, like, that bill costs me a lot.
Way one point eight here, they have.
Well, we have one, one here at high end, one person here, but that person at the board of education is eighty percent.
Yeah.
Or on the finance.
Yeah. And then we have another person stationed here that is.
That is. Full, full time, so. It's a full-time person.
So.
But it's different level, I mean, you all understand the levels that we have, you know? So, you know, there's going to be a certain.
Software, okay, we're looking for one full-time person at the administrative level.
Yes.
And then one full-time person at the.
High-end operating director level, whatever you wanna call it, treasurer level.
Okay. Which is very important. Well, they do title, well, that's how it's done in the past. We do a couple of days there, we do a couple of days here. So, and it, and, and that could move, so like, they start preparing their budget sooner than we do. So that person may end up spending three days a week there during their early budget season. Our budget season comes in a little bit later, so that then we switch to more time here. Um, audits, if they're done correctly, are done sooner in the year. So they would, again, the school preps their numbers first and then actually through the audit process, and then shift it over to us and we'd be getting ours done because we actually accomplished the school in our audit anyways. I mean, and there, that kind of goes to show that the, the departments are all together, really. Our audit, our audit's the school's, well, it's part of our, our audit, so, um. So it'll be, I mean, there'll be some give and take in there, but primarily, they're losing that person a little bit more than, than we are. Um, so, you know, and we would have our, our full-time person here to support the booking side of it and, and the checkbooks that are currently announced and all that other stuff. Um, you know, working on our, you know, validating our budget on a panel. Uh, and then maybe something where that actually picks up validated news too, I'm not sure. We can probably leave that to that person that comes in as to how the dividend work, but, you know, it's been done a couple of different places in the past, but.
Okay. Did I answer your question or not?
I did.
Okay.
Um, rule of in meetings for Wednesdays and Saturdays, you're on. You want a motion?
I'm shooting for seven minutes.
So you want a second now?
One second.
And a little later?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the assessors of the board of evaluation services are free.
So the evaluation R T is out. It, it's due in, I think, a little, two weeks from today.
Anything else related to that?
Oh, okay.
Treasurer's report?
You have the treasurer's report before you.
This?
No, not that, in your packet, the treasurer's report. It would be.
Yeah, that's fifty-two.
Uh, it's fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, sorry.
Treasurer's report starts in fifty-seven, you're back.
Fifty-seven. All right, let's move on, yes. Okay, anything else in town road updates?
Uh, we spent out of the town aid road update for the complete street scan. So that's the only thing we've expended out of that of any significance recently. And we still do not have, I went to the capital regional council, government's implementation meeting. They still do not have an update on when the town or when the state will consider the bond uh, that will approve county group. And we should have gotten to, basically, they're behind two payments. They should have paid us in, uh, around July of this year and they should be paying us the second or the first iteration, uh, about now.
Is there anything that we're really looking towards about?
No, it makes it a little difficult to plan spring painting or spring projects because we don't know whether they'll actually pass the money when it's a couple hundred thousand dollars difference. If they don't, until they pass it, we really don't want it. I wanna keep what's in town aid road, um, you know, kind of for emergency purposes. Um, so, so it's not having any immediate impact if they haven't passed it in April. It's gonna be a problem, so let's.
Yeah, but if you talk about town aid road, because I want to ask another statement.
No, so what I was gonna say is, um, I don't want you to be in a situation where we're not planning for that payment. Let's be ready to go. And I think worst-case scenario, this board will, um, ask the board of finance to, you know, uh, spend that account in the negative until we get the funds, unless there's some indication that we're not gonna do it. You know? Because we, we, we are so woefully behind on picking this town. We cannot do this again. I absolutely refuse to go through this again.
Those dollars will live in there.
Right, so let's plan accordingly. Worst-case scenario, we have the funds to cover that account, knowing that we're getting money from it, so.
So my question was, if they're, if the state is holding up the town aid road, will they have the E C S?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't think they have.
I don't.
It hasn't been on the.
Would be interesting if our revenue sample would sit there and list out what we're getting.
Yeah.
I, I think part of it with town aid road is the, the governor is in kind of a.
Well, yeah, he's.
Contest with the legislature, over roadwork in general.
Yeah.
And their, you know, latest proposal is heavy drop only.
Yeah.
Yeah, twelve, twelve bridges or something, yes, okay.
So.
I think E C S is a whole other.
I think, but I, I mean, I wonder if the state is looking at.
No.
I mean, I knew they were late.
We, that's why, this is with no discussion, I guess.
Okay, uh, the town cash report? I, I mean, I really, I, I mean, I, do you have a number?
Uh, it's in your packet. You know, it's on the page.
I don't know, fifty-seven on there, treasurer's report, revenue summary, four, one eight.
I mean, fifty-seven on there, treasurer's report, number four, one eight.
Okay.
So that's on page seventy-six, that's the cash account.
Yeah, see, I've got town budget in the seventies.
It's okay, it's in the seventies. I gave the D five, the D five, I don't have it sorted. But can you operate in calendar, four million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, plus six hundred thousand dollars, which is kept there to the relief please? We have to look at this. Alright, um, collections, your date.
Yeah, let's, I'll take mine, let's, that's for a little set up, I mean, with that bank, that was open.
So we've collected five million, six hundred, one thousand dollars in taxes for the year and we have three million, seven hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars left.
I'm collecting according to this.
Okay. Any other questions or anything else you want to talk about related to this? Eleven is the budget, transfers. Do you have any transfers we need to make?
Yes.
No, you, you added a nine.
Yes.
And we haven't got to do-
That's up to you, Russell.
Okay, so eleven B is refunds. Do you have refunds ready to enter this year, this week, this month, sorry? No refunds?
No, from the tax collector?
Yeah, so don't catch any, I saw the assessor has issued some refunds for sales of vehicles and other items, so those are non-cash items, but you don't get to throw down, they've just been changed on our accounts receivable. Always a problem. So now we have eleven C, approval of floor expenditures.
Okay, so before you, you should have do hard copies of request for overs expenditures of budget appropriations. One of them is yours to approve period because it's under the threshold, which requires that go to the selectmen. That is budget account zero three zero one dash three ninety, which is tree work. Original budget was ten thousand, I'd like to request an additional four thousand in that budget because we've spent the majority of that budget already. We still really would like to do the trees between the athletic field and the river whenever the ground freezes again to minimize, and we'd like to do it before the, the spring sport season.
Is there any other problem if you have transfers?
So.
Do you want to do both transfers at the same time or will you approve them both?
Uh, you could, or I wrote out all motions, you could approve them individually, or I guess make a combined motion and approve them both. You're probably better off doing them individually.
Somebody have it in the folder?
I motion. Authorize all expenditures of budget code zero three zero one dash six four six by four thousand. Budget is on hot weather, nice setting, deliver veterans memorial field.
Second.
Uh, discussion, all agree? I don't see a stall.
Okay, the second one is for salt. This motion is a little different because this is a pass-through and it's the Board of Finance that ultimately approves, but you need to recommend for them to approve. And basically what we're doing is because we've gone to all salt, we have a lot of money in sand we're not using, we're simply spending it on salt instead of sand.
Yeah, Scott, any more to go?
I motion, we would like an approval and forward to the Board of Finance for approval of the expenditures of budget code zero three zero three dash three ninety by twenty thousand dollars to purchase salt.
Second. Okay, now, this is where I admit I did something stupid and in the, all those mission, I mixed the two budget codes back together. Um, it should be the budget code for salt is zero three zero three six four six. And the other one is three ninety, sorry, I put those backwards.
No objection.
So, so was the first one correct or not correct?
The first one is not correct, the budget code of the first one should have been oh three oh one dash three nine zero.
Just, we can amend the budget schedule, approve, make a motion, approve, approve all motion, that's what it is.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve both of those motions, as if they have the codes.
One second.
Yeah.
All those things. No, I need to close with a question, is there a role of last extension sector, are you? No, that is not true. They do have some issues though. Alright, so the last part of our meeting is the tax collectors report. Well, I'm sorry, I'm not answering, so, yeah, I don't want to transfer. One of the transfer of agents one. There is a table. Okay, here it is, uh, transfer request.
Yes.
Make a motion.
I would make a motion, I would like the transfer of my, so my personal salary to the senior.
Okay. All of the paper, hi.
Who's that?
Scott. Scott's on it tonight, please, attention.
Alright, tax collector report, read under request, there are none, right?
No.
Uh, department reports are all live, too, as that we actually saw the fire department came in this afternoon or this evening. Any questions on how those reports, as they were presented?
You also had, the fire department gave you the year end summary, which is probably more of interest because it gives you kind of a flavor of what happens in the year of our department. That should be on your, your screen.
Good.
Also, again, you guys are heads up, the fire department, the fire commission, I should say, met today to work with their budget and their, their service that they had through last year.
I see.
But that is a fair question.
Okay.
Any increase? No, 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 there, there's still something out there about the possibly trying to get an ATV through CIP, but that's a separate issue.
Okay.
That's not a fire issue.
So any other questions on department reports? Okay.
So the one thing I would bring to your attention, you should all have a written copy from the indoor animal control officer. That was, he had asked for potentially an increase in salary. I told him if he was gonna get it, he needs to justify it, and he wrote this, which was basically a summary of what he's done, what calls he's responding to in the year. It's interesting reading, but nothing else.
Yeah.
You just said, you understand that, where is that located? Is it in the-
I think it was in paper.
It should have been a paper copy, I just got it this afternoon.
Got it.
So it's not online.
Alright, did you pick out this, it is in this package, it is.
Good guy.
Oh, right.
Okay, uh, resignations? Any, no resignations, great.
We have not had any resignations, however, one of the members of the Rand Board of Education has indicated that he will probably be submitting his resignation from the Rand Board of Education.
Okay. Alright, um, correspondence, anything, nothing, okay, hold your seat.
I have some.
Five or less.
Actually, I have several questions.
Alright, hold on, hold on a second.
Um, I, I, you guys have mentioned a couple times cutting trees down along the riverbank and I was just wondering, is that gonna affect the stability of the map? I'm not sure where it is over time. Yes.
So I can answer that. Um, it's not ideal. However, the trees are dead. I have sightwalked it and, and received, so the, the question the town had is does inland weapons want jurisdiction over us cutting that out? We, I went to several meetings, we've sightwalked it with the inland weapons commission and they're, based on what we're doing, they're not claiming jurisdiction for what we're doing. Um, so we are intending to not write the stumps, to leave the stumps in place. The, the concern really is that they've been dead for a little over a year now. The large branches, the small branches started coming down, you know, at the beginning of the summer now, the large branches are coming down. Based on the tree species, we would accept, expect them to start coming down within the next year and there's multiple ones that are likely to hit the athletic field, just crush the fence and potentially damage the track and the playing surface, which is why we're, you know, we're trying to expedite this. Um, it is a concern, the town should consider replanting in some fashion along there. And that would be a wonderful project for the consecration commission.
As, as soon as that overstory is gone by those seawish trees, there's gonna be a lot of earth, significant amount of earth. You can already see it. The new growth that's already there, there's a lot of seeds, there's a lot of different forces involved.
I just felt like your mouth there is concerned.
Yeah, it is, it's a concern of mine too, I, I share your concern, but it's, those trees are gonna be down in the next couple of years, it's just a question of whether we take them down or we deal with the aftermath of them falling down.
Okay.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, regarding the-
Uh, it's just, just for, just from you, you made, you were so back Linda, which was supposed to-
There you go. Oh, thank you. Uh, Amy March.
Amy March.
And I don't know if I heard you correctly earlier, it sounded like you were saying March, but. Okay, so regarding the cut in the education budget, who determines what gets cut?
Board of Education.
Board of that.
They don't, they determine not just what gets cut, but when they're gonna get cut initially. So Board of Sustenance has no periphery about the budget, but they, they know that we have asked repeatedly about the fact that the budget has, is dramatically different than our surrounding communities. So they can ask for some guidance as to what we are actually looking for, for them to be a, a little bit closer to in line. And so that's what we're trying to give them as well as the direction.
Okay, so there's any other questions or really for them?
Yeah.
I mean, you don't know what they are, but I know.
Sure.
So I'll figure that out and go from there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, I just wanted to say thank you to-
It's seriously-
Yeah, it's seriously, we also want to, I want to say thank you to the five board members and administrators after, after such tumultuous, dear decade of ineffective government in town. Um, having observed our government for twenty-eight years as a resident, forty years as a property owner, it's, it's encouraging to see you guys work together, you know, solve problems, make progress and make up for lost time. Also, as particularly Jeff, keep us from going down rabbit holes, I mean, even with a diverse background of people that diverse opinions on things to solve problems. Uh, compliment Jeff for not letting us go down that rabbit hole and keeping the movement going forward. So thank you to you all for your good work and hope for a future of our, of our country. Of our town, here on the state, and then we get support, the state's always proud, that we get the support for the United Education, and infrastructure.
Alright, thank you. Diane?
Yeah.
Really? Really?
It, it, oh, probably, I don't know.
I mean, you have a very few months.
God, that's a lot.
I, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to see the mural at the library. It was like the best, and then, and this week we had the, who's next, why to put on?
Elliot.
Did he?
Elliot.
Yes, yes, and so it was now good and right and, um, we're delighted with the outcome of it.
Alright, good. Okay, Mark?
I'm good.
Board, Board of Finance here person is here, we appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. Anything you want to bring to our attention, anything we know, good? Okay, uh, before we leave, you should sing happy birthday to all of you.
All of you.
All of you.
Uh, yeah.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Paula. Happy birthday to you.
Before we turn to the quick audience question, did you just invite your folks out?
Yes, yes.
Is that, is that an improvement?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I'm delighted to see that we can use kale, it's a, video voice.
Elaine, thank you very much.
And for the day, we do.
Alright, can we make a motion for her? Uh, yes, step forward. Can we make a motion for her? I just said it.
Okay.
Alright, all of you familiar, hi, thank you.